Clerk Seeger, can you please take roll call?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for September 12th, 2023?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we will have public comment on agenda items only. So I'm going to go online and this is three minutes public comment on agenda items only. Looking online, I have five attendees. If you would like to have public comment on agenda items only, please raise your hand electronically. I don't see any hands. No public comment online. No public comment online. Okay, thank you. Any public comment in the room? No, we don't have anyone in the room. Okay, great. Thank you. So public comment on agenda items only is closed. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
I move that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. That's good. Yeah, let's stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Next, we have the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Support.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1. Consider increasing Wolverine freightliner purchase order for municipal services.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Yes, we have new microphones and you press to talk and then let go to mute and we're gonna, we'll work on that a little bit more.
My sincerest apologies to everybody at home. They did not hear the roll call.
Next item is G1. Consider new appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council.
Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Enterjat Singh Bains to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2026.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Under CDBG law bylaws, the confirmation of all Advisory Council members must be approved by a majority of the Board of Trustees. There's a current vacancy due to one Advisory Council member who has a term expiring at the end of 2023 and does not wish to seek reappointment. The interview committee has chosen Untarjat Singh Bains to fill this vacancy. Untarjat has 12-plus years of engineering and project management experience, but also is very passionate about volunteering and serving the Canton community. He has taken time to attend the CDBG meeting and speak with the employee liaison about the council's goals and how they operate. The interview committee quickly recognized his enthusiasm for serving Canton Township and feels CDBG will be a perfect fit for him. So I have Untarjat online. They do. Okay. So any questions or comments?
I wanted to congratulate him.
Yeah, I'll just, I know Enterjat as well. He's been a delightful human being. I think he'll do a fantastic job. So I'm really grateful to the supervisor's office and the trustees are bringing forward this recommended appointment. I would be voting in favor of it.
Yep. Just looking forward to Untarjat taking his role and being on the tax, or on the CDBG board. I think that he's gonna be a great addition.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Untarjat, would you like to say anything?
I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G2, consider appointment to the Canton Tax Board of Review.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board of Trustees approve the appointment of Hussein Jeffrey Malad to the Canton Town Tax Board of Review for a two-year term to expire 9/30/25.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. An individual was appointed to the Tax Board of Review in early 2023 who was not able to fulfill the obligation due to a family issue, resulting in the need to fill the vacancy a second time. Supervisor is recommending the new appointment of Hussein Jeffrey Malad to fill the vacancy. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Oh, just congratulate Mr. Malad.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Jeff. I think that the interview committee was pretty impressed with him and his accomplishments and, you know, he's been involved in other cities that he's lived in and is looking forward to becoming just as involved in Canton, I think.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Jeff is on with us. Jeff, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, good evening. Yes, thank you for the appointment and I truly look forward to serving on the board and serving the community in Canton. I appreciate everyone's interest in having me be appointed and look forward to working with everyone on the team. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. And have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, next we have item G3. Consider approval of letter agreement between Canton Township and the POAM on wage incentives.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and the POAM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Due to the public safety shortage impacting southeastern Michigan and the rest of the country, Canton Township and the POAM have reached a letter of agreement to enhance wages and allow for lateral pay for lateral police officer hires. This LOA provides that retroactive to an effective date of August 1st, 2023, the parties agree to modify existing and new hire patrol officers' wage scale as follows. Start at $64,316, six months, $72,245, one year, $80,172, two-year, $90,742. Officers who are maxed out on the wage scale shall receive a one-time 3% increase in base pay which is reflected in the two-year pay above. The accelerated wage scale will be effective for a two-year period extending, ending on October 1st, 2025. On October 1st, the wage scale will revert to a four-year to maximum schedule. The parties have agreed that the Chief of Police shall be permitted to place a new employee into any step in the wage scale based on previous law enforcement or military experience. Deputies Haver, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, but I just would like to thank the Patrol Officers Union for working with us in the township on this wage incentive. We hope it will do what's needed to retain our officers and enhance our recruitment efforts out in the community.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Chief Chad?
I'd like to thank the board for the support. You know, it's been a long path, you know, going through this public safety shortage and finding a way with your support. This has made us one of the most inviting locations besides our foundation, our history as a police department and our community. This is a place to be and we're seeing it with our applications now. Thank you.
Any board comments? Kate?
Just wanted to clarify that it's on October 1st, 2025 that the wage scale will revert to the four-year maximum schedule. And also wanted to thank everyone who was working on this because I think this is gonna be, I hope, very helpful to the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, these are unprecedented times coming out of the pandemic. And so I was glad that we were all able to work together to make this happen. I also wanted to thank Director Trumbull and the Finance Department for helping us with finding the money to make this happen as well and make it easy for us to make a decision.
Thank you. Tanya, do you have anything?
Sorry. I also wanted to, you know, I think this is the right step in the right direction. And we are dealing with unprecedented shortages and I really want to thank everyone who worked together to come towards this letter of agreement. And hopefully we can have, you know, we can retain our officers and we can hire new ones.
Michael? Thanks.
I am both grateful for this and will be voting in support. I could talk about this for hours, so I will just say that.
Thank you. And congratulations to the negotiating team on both sides. I know everybody negotiating great faith and it went well. So congratulations to everybody. Thank you. Okay, item G4. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, let's hold them in suspense.
Make it official.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G4, consider approval of letter of agreement between Canton Township and the CCOA.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and the CCOA.
Support.
Due to the public safety shortage impacting southeastern Michigan and the rest of the country, Canton Township and the CCOA, or the Command Unit, have reached a letter of agreement to recruit and retain public safety officers with this wage incentive. This LOA also addresses the pension changes affecting members promoted into the CCOA from the POAM with the hybrid pension benefit. The LOA provides that upon ratification by the parties, one, all bargaining unit members shall receive a 3% across-the-board raise. Two, bargaining unit members in the MERS hybrid plan shall transition to the new defined benefit plan with the same terms as transitioning POAM members. Three, the member contribution shall be reduced from 10% to 8% of income for all members. Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything to add?
No, again, I just want to thank the Command Officers Union and the board for working together on this and, you know, making sure we're able to retain the police force that we have here in Canton. It's one of the best, if not the best, in the state of Michigan. And give our Director of Police Services, Chad Ball, the tools that he needs to recruit additional police officers out on the street.
Thank you. Chief Chad, anything? Just to let you know, you know, you don't actually have to push on this. You just hold your finger down because my finger is really hurting. So you just have to touch it. Anybody on the board want to say anything?
Everything that we said for the Patrol Union, I imagine we would just reiterate for the Command.
I agree. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Congratulations. Item G5, consider approval of IGA with Wayne County for WWCTR program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and the Charter Township of Canton for $150,000 and to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. In September of 2022, Leisure Services provided an update on the Western Wayne County Therapeutic Recreation Program to the Conference of Western Wayne. The presentation was made in advance of consideration for a technical amendment to the Wayne County Commission's 2022 through 23 comprehensive budget in the amount of $150,000. The amendment was approved and Leisure Services began planning for future growth of the therapeutic recreation program. Supervisor's Office has continued working with Wayne County to develop an intergovernmental agreement and the county is planning to forward this agreement to the Commission for approval. Leisure Services is requesting the Township Board to approve the IGA and accept funding. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
I have to hold mine down. No, I have to hold down. No, I don't have anything to add. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have, just as a point of clarification. This IGA is for the funding that the Wayne County Commission approved in the 2022-2023 budget. So that's last year's budget. They are also renewing the funding in this year's budget, the 2023-2024 budget, which I don't believe has passed the Commission yet, but the amendment is in the Commission budget.
Thanks. Any questions or comments?
That was my question. I didn't, so this 150 is what we're approving tonight because you have talked in the summary of continuing to work with Wayne County to develop an intergovernmental agreement. So is that something coming or is that what this is?
Yeah, so this is the intergovernmental agreement for the expenditure for the funds approved in the county's 2022-2023 budget. Once the funds are approved in the county's 2023-2024 budget, this same amount renewed for the therapeutic recreation program, I believe there'll be another IGA for that for the board to consider as well.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who worked on this also because this program is vital to the families who send their family members to it. And I also wanted to thank the Wayne County Commission for the funding that they approved and hopefully will approve. But yeah, this is just such an important program and it is not just for Canton residents. It supports families throughout Western Wayne County. So it's vitally important.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider waiving the bidding process and approval of the repair and replacement of the north and south gate operators at the DPW facility.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the repair of the north and south side gate operators to Internal International Controls and Equipment at 35083 Cordelia in Clinton Township, Michigan 48035 in the amount of $26,714 from the following capital outlay machinery
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Public Works Division had an inspection done by International Controls and Equipment on two sliding gate operators. On the north and south side of the building, repairs and replacement of parts are needed. Enlisted in an International Controls and Equipment quote for these repairs and replacement. Since installation 2001, there has been ongoing maintenance with these automatic censored gates to the point they have met their useful life expectancy. The DPW did work with the Facilities Department to seek out other vendors and were unable to locate other vendors who had experience working on the specific equipment. Director Norwood, do you have any questions? Sorry, comments?
Madam Supervisor, I don't have anything to add other than we got to get in and out of the facility. So these gates are important.
Thanks. Any questions? All those in favor have the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. G7, consider a purchase approval for Spalding Decker Associates for Engineering Services on two sidewalk gaps along the ITC corridor.
Madam Supervisor, I move to issue a purchase order to Spalding Decker and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $7,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order in the amount of $7,000 for Spalding Decker Associates to cover the cost of additional survey and design work related to the Canton Township sidewalk program. This is being brought before the board because the original scope of work exceeded $10,000. Finance and Budget Department policy requires projects exceeding that amount be approved by the board. Due to these invoices being part of that original project, this is exceeding the threshold. The total amount due to SDA is $6,171.75. A contingency has been added for closeout of the work for a PO amount of $7,000. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Just that we're very excited about getting the project done on Cherry Hill near, between Lily and Shell in there. That's been a gap that we've been trying to fill for, since Cherry Hill was redone a few years ago by Wayne County. So we are working with the residents there and we hope to get that complete because ITC has already given us approval to put the path west of the site to connect to the existing trail sidewalks that's there.
Thank you. That's not all the way through yet, is it, almost?
We are working with one property owner there to make sure that they want to come aboard with us.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? Stephen?
Excited for both of these. I'm assuming this will be done next year, the actual work. Is that right?
Correct. Yes. I think we're gonna miss the season to be able to get it.
What's that?
I think we'll miss this season to get input this year.
But yeah, that'll connect the trail to the businesses down Cherry Hill, which will be nice to be able to get to them. And then the one over on Denton Road, that'll be nice for people to be able to have sidewalks all the way to get into the village. So Cherry Hill Village from the subdivisions around it. So that's nice.
Michael?
I'm very grateful that we are starting this work. I used to live in that neighborhood, Cherry Orchard. And so I can't count the amount of times I've seen people walking in the apron there. And it's not an overly safe area to be walking in the apron. And I remember one day I saw a lady who was pushing a stroller in the apron. And I, just every time I see that, I just get so nervous. And having connectivity there, that sidewalk there is gonna be phenomenal. So I'm grateful we're kind of starting that, getting that kicking, taking it off. So I moved, but you know, people are still, people still gotta walk over there. So I moved because of the sidewalk. I'm just kidding. I didn't move because of the sidewalk, but I might go over there just to walk down that sidewalk once it's done. We'll see.
Yeah, I concur with Stephen and Michael. I think this is very important that we are connecting our community through sidewalks because I also used to live around there and it is a dangerous way to walk on the road. So this is a good way to ensure more safety in the community.
Yes, this is important because as you said, we see a lot of people on the road there. We want to keep it safe. All those in favor, motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, consider issuance of purchase order to ITC Holdings in signature accepting an easement for construction, maintenance, and repair of water main.
Madam Supervisor, I move to issue a purchase order to ITC Holding Corporation in the amount of $11,296 and approve the signature of the proposed water main easement by the Township Supervisor.
Support, please.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. And Tanya Ganguly. I know, it's a finger.
I feel like I'm on a game show where I have to try to hit the button to give my answer.
Don't be bashful.
I have to hold mine down too. So it was a little extra work.
Oh my God. Engineering Services are requesting a purchase order be approved for ITC Holdings in the amount of $11,926 for purchase of water main easement. Additionally, ES is requesting the Township Supervisor execute said water main easement. Director Norwood, anything on that?
Nothing further to add.
Questions or comments? Kate?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I just noticed that the motion has a different amount than the summary. So is it $11,926 or $11,296?
$11,926.
Okay.
$11,926, you said?
That is correct, based upon documentation.
I will make a friendly amendment to my initial motion. Clearly, we superimpose the nine and the two when typing up the model resolution, if it pleases.
Support.
Okay.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Oh, you have, I'm sorry. Okay, ask your question. Sorry. We didn't vote.
We voted.
Oh, do you want, you can still ask your questions.
Can I ask my question? Just, there's, ITC's letter said that they want a survey of the site done, certified survey drawing done before work. And so I am just wondering, was that done already? And if not, which I'm thinking it wasn't, if not, that's gonna be an additional cost, right?
That will not be, that will be an additional cost. This is just what we have to, the cost, an arrangement with ITC. So we will be paying for that survey as part of this project, from this water and sewer fund.
Okay. But it's, I think that's good that they're requiring it and we're gonna do it because it's good to just make sure we know exactly where that easement's gonna be.
Yeah, we don't want to be in conflict with any of their equipment or anything else that's in that right of way.
Definitely not. You don't want anybody getting in contact with any thing that could electrocute them.
Bad, yeah.
Apologize for that. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Item G9, consider budget amendment for Al's Asphalt Paving Company and Wade Trim Associates for North Pavilion Parking Lot Improvement.
Get ready, I'm gonna merge all three of these into one super motion. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the change order for Al's Asphalt, for the North Pavilion, $84,545.70 and approve moving the following on PO number 2022-1133. Al's Asphalt, decrease line one, Northwest Parking Lot, $84,545.70, and increase $84,545.70 to line three, North Pavilion, to cover Al's change order and approve the decrease in PO number 2022-1133. Al's Asphalt, line one, Northwest Pavilion, lot 11, $11,137.50, and decrease $11,137.50 to Wade Trim, PO number 2022-1133. Line three, North Pavilion, using the same account number 401-441.970_0050.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Engineering Services is requesting modification of PO as listed to cover additional expenses associated with the construction and rehabilitation of the Heritage Parking Lot. Work began in 2022 and carried into 23. The 2023 work consisted of paving, asphalt, pass, and concrete work around the North Pavilion Parking Lot. While working on this lot, additional items for tree removal, path alignment, and significant storm drainage work were unforeseen items and added to the project. Additionally, it was necessary to install temporary pavement and parking access that was not part of the original scope to accommodate a pavilion use reservation. Any more to add there, Dave?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. This was an interesting project because we worked very closely with Leisure Services because this is a heavily used part of the heritage park. And there were some changes that Engineering Services worked with them along to make it certainly more accessible and also better aligned with other features of the park.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G10, consider issuance of purchase orders to Al's Asphalt Paving Company and Wade Trim Associates for Pheasant Run Golf Course Kart Path Improvements.
Madam Supervisor, I'm gonna do this in these two motions and one super motion as well. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Al's Asphalt in the amount of $844,600 for the Pheasant Run Golf Cart Path Improvements and a second purchase order to Wade Trim in the amount of $47,706 for the Pheasant Run Golf Course Kart Path Improvements.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Engineering Services is requesting issuance of order to Al's Asphalt Paving Company in the amount of $844,600 for the Pheasant Run Golf Course Path Improvements. Engineering Services is also requesting issuance of a PO to Wade Trim for construction observation in the amount of $47,706 for the Pheasant Run Golf Course Path Improvements. Dave, do you have anything to add on this?
We're very excited to get this project in because of the, we have to work very closely. We're very excited to get this project in because of the, we have to work very closely with the golf course and there's a timing issue because we don't want to do it during the middle of summer when usage is very high. And also, you know it in this resolution, we're actually approving full 18 holes and we're going to keep going, we're going to keep paving as long as we can. Whatever we don't finish this year, we'll get completed next year. So thank you.
So, but our goal, we think we might be able to, right, if the weather holds out?
The weather holds out, we'll get it all done.
Any happy residents and golfers? Any questions or comments from the board? Kate?
I will just say that I'm on the Leisure Services Advisory Committee and we get a lot, that committee is always asking about when this work's going to be done, so they will be very excited.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G 11, consider waiving the bidding process and approving the sole source purchase of the Allegard Patient Positioning System.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve waiving the bidding process to purchase the Allegard Patient Positioning System from MED Alliance Group Incorporated, the sole source provider of the Allegard System, in the amount of $21,255.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Breninsky. The Fire Department is requesting to purchase three of the Allegard Patient Positioning Systems through MED Alliance Group Incorporated in the amount of $21,255. Due to MED Alliance Group Incorporated being the exclusive dealer of the Allegard Patient Positioning System, the department is also requesting to waive the bidding process under sole source provider exception. So this is committed to providing high-quality CPR to those that experience a cardiac arrest in the community to increase the chances of a patient's survival. The department is continually researching the latest technology and CPR procedures, which includes the elevated CPR method. This method is scientifically based that could offer a significant opportunity to improve the chances for survival of cardiac arrest. It incorporates raising the head, heart, and thorax in a multi-level elevation and a time sequence in conjunction with best practices resuscitation protocol. The Allegard System is the only device that precisely and consistently positions a patient for CPR and airway management. The device raises a patient into multi-level position that can support the practice of this CPR method. Stockline, do you have anything to add?
I would just say that Captain Rob De Vries has put a lot of work into this and really did his research on that. And he's brought this forward the last couple of years and we've kind of kicked it down the road until we saw some more of our studies from our EMS arrests. And we're seeing an increase in survivability over the last two years with some of the other things that he's done. And this is a pilot program that was approved by the state. So we're kind of at the forefront of this and we're looking to make a better survivability rate for our patients. And I think that it's going to make a difference. So this is going to be a two-year trial and we're only purchasing three of them. So it'll be on three of our ambulances, not all five of them, until we can judge if it's going to be successful or not. But with that being said, everything that he's done so far has been proven successful, so.
So this actually raises the patient and the machine does all the palpitations?
Correct. So you guys purchased the, our automated CPR device systems last year. And that's been helpful in that survival rate. So this added with that. And then the airway systems that we're using now should make a huge difference in survivability.
Any questions or comments? Tanya?
I was just looking into what exactly this was. And I think, as always, Canton Township Fire Department and our EMS people are in the forefront of it. So I'm glad that we are bringing it out here on a trial basis and it'll help in saving many lives.
Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Director Stockline and just, you're always at the forefront in looking for what's best for our residents. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the firefighters and everyone who is always pushing for these upgrades, I'll put it. And I was wondering, you had mentioned that, you know, this is for three, but we have five ambulances. So how are you planning to allocate them?
So we're going to put them on the, we have three fire stations, right, currently? So we're going to put them on the front-run ambulances at each station there. And then the two backup ambulances, that go out all the time, they're not really backup ambulances, but the three front runs that go out, we'll make sure that they have those on them. So they're the ones that respond to the majority of the calls.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one other thing. If Clerk Seeger could make a friendly amendment to that resolution, or I could make a friendly amendment to the resolution, I just caught this a little while ago. But the 21,255 is for the product and it doesn't include shipping. So if we could include shipping on that product in the resolution?
I would amend the motion maybe for an amount not to exceed, to include shipping in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Okay.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G 12, consider approval for a purchase order increases for food and beverage and golf resale products at Pheasant Run Golf Club.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to the attached purchase orders.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Due to increased business and substantial increases in product costs, Pheasant Run Golf Club food, beverage, sales, and product costs, along with golf resale, have increased more than could have been estimated and require us to increase our dollar amounts for the following purchase orders to Gordon Food Service, Akushna, and Cisco Detroit. Director Homberger, do you have anything to add?
This is kind of a good, good thing. We're selling more, so we need to buy more stuff to sell more. Our revenue is up, so we need to increase our purchases of products. So it's happy to answer any other questions.
Thanks. Steven? Oh, sorry, you look like you're, Michael?
I have a question, Greg. Who wrote this RBA?
Paul, at our golf course.
Paul should be responsible for writing all RBAs for Canton Township. Because that was one of the easiest motions I've ever had to make for a budget amendment. I didn't have to say any weird long numbers, any dashes, increase the dollar amounts. That was beautiful.
Well, I will let him know. I was a little nervous to tell you.
Okay.
See, I did, sir.
Like, I'm like, in my head thinking, we like approve ordinance amendments and like TPO and like contracts by just saying, the attached contract. But then when I got to make a change to a PO, it's like trying to crack the Da Vinci Code or something.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G 13, consider approval of purchase order for Summit Stump Removal and Fill. Oh, wait, oh, actually, it's Summit on the Park and Summit Parkway.
Tell he did not write this RBA. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for a total amount of $21,775 to Reliable Landscaping at 8285 Lilly Road, Canton, Michigan 48187, for stump removal and fill at Summit on the Park, Southeast Property, Summit West Parking Lot and Summit Parkway, with $3,800 to be paid from the subject account number for miscellaneous township emergency, and $17,795 to be paid from the account number for miscellaneous township emergencies, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Breninsky. In an effort to finish a cleanup and removal of damaged trees caused by the August 23 tornado to provide a safe environment for Canton residents, the Leisure Services Department is recommending the approval of a purchase order for a total amount of $21,775 to Reliable Landscaping for the stump removal and fill at Summit on the Park and Summit Parkway. As staff continues to clean up and remove trees from these areas, additional landscape services are being identified, specifically stump removal. Due to the location of these damaged trees, it's imperative that the stumps be removed as quickly as possible to provide safety for our residents. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
No, happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions?
How many trees did we lose or about, do you know?
They were in the neighborhood of 200, based on the overall count.
Really?
Not in, not just at the summit, just township property.
Wow.
Yeah, there was a list that said 194, I think, and that didn't include the golf course.
All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G 14, consider a request to approve an agreement for the engineered drawings, bid assistance, and construction management for the replacement of the three pavilions at Heritage Park South.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to MCSA Group Incorporated at 529 Greenwood Avenue, Southeast Grand Rapids, Michigan at 49506, for the engineering, bid assistance, and construction management of the Heritage Park Pavilion, Heritage Park South Pavilion replacement, in the amount of $25,378.80 to be paid from the subject account for miscellaneous township emergencies, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Breninsky. During the tornado that occurred on the evening of August 24, 2023, three pavilions in Heritage Park were destroyed beyond repair. The three pavilions are located near the Heritage Park Wooden Plaiscape and are used daily from May through September by summer camps, family reunions, and other community rentals. In an effort to provide the community with opportunities to use this space quickly, MCSA has provided a proposal to provide engineering drawings, bid assistance, and construction management for the replacement of the three structures and their hard surfaces. Staff at MCSA understand the value of providing the community gathering space and will make all efforts to have construction begin in the spring of 2024. Canton Leisure Services recommends awarding the contract for the engineering bid assistance and construction management of Heritage Park South Pavilions to MCSA Group for the proposed amount of $25,378.80. A budget amendment is necessary. MCSA has long been an effective service provider for Canton Park improvements projects. In August 2019, Canton Township and MCSA Group signed a three-year contract with the option of a three-year extension for playground consulting services. During this time, MCSA has assisted the township with numerous playground designs, providing dependable, professional, and quality service. At the time of expiration, Canton Leisure Services and MCSA mutually agreed to continue their agreement, exercising their right to extend their contract for an additional three years. This contract extension was approved by the board at the October 11, 2022 board meeting. Director Homberger, do you have anything else?
Yes, that we are optimistic that these costs will be covered by our insurance once that claim gets finalized. We're working with them on getting all the documentation back and forth, but things are going quickly with the insurance claim.
Questions or comments?
I'd also say, I'm sorry, to add on to that, I'll also say that we will provide an opportunity for the board to review proposed plans prior to any construction. Our initial thought is that we wouldn't build exactly as it was, maybe something a little more along the lines of what we did out at Preservation Park, a little more modern, nice look like that. We don't have final thoughts yet, but that's just kind of an initial, just spitballing idea on that. But we will provide you all with an opportunity to review that before we just move forward with awarding anything or finalizing the design.
Thanks, Steven.
More question for you, Madam Supervisor, I think, is has there been any money come from county or state or anything in terms of cleanup? I mean, I know that it was more than just our township that got hit, but there were some discussions of that right afterward.
Yes, the state right now has sent state-level FEMA groups across Wayne County. They haven't gotten to Canton yet, but they will be, and they're walking through all the damage assessments. And then they will take that back to the state and determine if it moves on to the federal government. So that's where they are in the process right now. Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone involved, Leisure Services Supervisor's Office, for moving quickly on this.
Thank you. Michael?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I will since you called on me. Never miss an opportunity to talk. Yeah, I remember the surreal, how surreal it was that next day after the wind and the tornado came through there. I remember running into Abe and Greg, staring at all the trees that were down and, or ripped in half, looking at the pavilions themselves, with the mortar just broken. And it was, it was, it was pretty bizarre. So I'm glad to see that we are doing what people do. We are rebuilding. And reflecting on how fortunate we were that we didn't lose anybody in Canton Township. I know there was a fatality along 96. I drove up to Lansing today and I saw the devastation of the forests that were there where the, where the larger tornado touched down there where the fatality was. And it was a visual reminder of that day and but I'm lucky, I'm glad that we're rebuilding, I'm glad that we're moving forward and replanting and doing what we can to recover from that. Because that was a very devastating series of events, both the flood and then the, those winds that came within 24-hour period. Was unlike anything I've experienced in Canton Township up to this point. So, thank you.
Yes, and of course, it didn't touch the wooden structure, which was just feet away from it, which is interesting. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item G 15, consider approval of application for the Fiscal Year 24 Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the submission of an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the Fiscal Year 24 Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant towards the planting of trees within Canton's parks and to accept the funds if approved. Canton has committed a matching to $20,000 for a total of $40,000 and further to approve the attached resolution in support of the Michigan Natural Resources Fiscal Year 2024 Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Breninsky. Canton Leisure Services is seeking approval to apply for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources administered Community Forestry Grant to be implemented in 2024. The application for the grant will assist Canton Township with additional funds to purchase diverse species of trees to be planted in multiple Canton parks. After the flooding and tornado that occurred in August 2023, Canton Township was faced with countless amounts of damage and uprooted trees. This grant will be instrumental in the process of rebuilding Canton's tree canopy within the parks, beginning with those that were affected by the storm. Canton is committed to allocating $20,000 from the park's tree maintenance line items to use as a grant match towards the purchase of additional trees for Canton parks. Leisure Services is recommending approving the application for Fiscal Year 24 Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant to assist with purchasing trees to plant in Canton parks. Director Homberger, you want to add anything?
Certainly. This is, basically, we're leveraging funds that we already have budgeted and we are already intending to spend next year to apply for a grant that requires matching funds to hopefully get a match to replant those trees that we were just talking about with the last RBA.
Thanks. Comments or questions? Michael?
I have a question. Given that we just spent about $100,000 on a contract with Cremboli, I think, for trees and then doing this, has there been any discussion about trying to apply for a Tree City USA designation? The township has been doing a substantial amount when it comes to trees. And a lot of really good stuff. I think moving out the Bradford pears and putting in like diseased Russian elms, pretty cool, the sycamore trees, the gum trees, those are awesome. So like, if we're doing that, have we thought about applying for Tree City USA? And who would do that? Just curious.
Yes, yes, we have. Community planner Patrick Sloan is also in attendance and he's been working on that. So he'd be happy to answer questions too about that.
Yes. Yeah, just to follow up with what Dave said, we've taken some initial steps in terms of looking at what the criteria are. And we meet a lot of those criteria in terms of certain spending, certain operations. It's a matter of doing internal steps. There's an ordinance that would have to be adopted. There are some administrative steps that are all attainable. It's just, it's a process to go through. But we do meet a lot of the criteria. The others that we don't meet are pretty straightforward to meet.
Questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah, so I want to thank Leisure Services for bringing this forward about applying for a grant to help with this and just to make sure that our residents understand the amount of money lost in trees is way beyond this. And we talked about the 194. I know we talked about the one hundred and ninety-four trees, public trees that were lost, and it's looking like over a hundred thousand dollars worth of trees if we look at the damage and the planting cost. So that is pretty sad to me because I love trees, but also a significant cost to the community in, in lost trees. So this goes a little ways towards helping that, but we're still going to be prying for future years to, to do more planting, I'm sure, because this is just a drop in the bucket. But at least, at least we've got a start.
Thanks. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G sixteen, consider approval of a purchase order to OHM Advisors for Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for Preservation Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve a purchase order to OHM Advisors, three-four-zero-zero-zero, Plymouth Road, Livonia, Michigan, four-eight-one-five-zero for Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for Preservation, for Preservation Park. Purchase order will be submitted in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to be paid from the account, subject account number for professional services.
Or?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Through a combination of funding sources, Canton continues to put its effort into Canton Township Square Project at Cherry Hill Village. The Town Square Project will invest in some of the community's most treasured assets, including the Village Square Park, Historic Arts Factory Building, Cherry Hill School, Preservation Park, Trails Public Parking Improvements, Wayfinding and Programming. The next step in the developmental process includes Preservation Park and a replacement for the Katie Boyer Barn, which was lost in a fire in twenty-twenty-one. OHM has submitted a proposal for a schematic site and architectural designs, updated conceptual opinions of probable cost for each portion of the project, and will host meetings with community stakeholders. OHM has played a key instrumental role in developing the Cherry Hill Village Square Project concept. To continue this significant momentum and build on this concept development, staff are requesting the bidding process be waived and approve a purchase order to OHM Advisors for these services with a total not to exceed fee of seventeen thousand dollars. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Or rebuilding after loss. So that's what this is all about. So hopefully, we're going to have a contest to see which one gets built first, the tornado pavilions or the fire barn. So what can we do first?
Any questions or comments? Tanya?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, you know, we, we are glad that we are moving ahead with the reconstruction and also with the, you know, in the next phase of the Cherry Hill Village Town Square Project. So very excited of things that are moving ahead.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G seventeen, consider purchase order for PPM tree service and arbor care for tree removal and pruning services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the issuance of a purchase order for PPM tree service in, and arbor care for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, and we will approve the attached budget amendment for tree removal and pruning.
Or?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. At its meeting on August eighth, twenty-twenty-three, Township Board of Trustees approved the issuance of purchase orders for PPM tree service and arbor care in the amounts of a hundred and five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand from the Admissible Services Department, and thirty thousand from the Leisure Services Department, which is previously budgeted for twenty-twenty-three. The planned tree pruning and removal was primarily to take place along major roads and on township property, and removal services, including tree removal, stump grinding, and site restoration with topsoil, backfill, grass seed, and straw. The focus of the removal efforts was planned for older pear trees that are nearing the end of their life and are more susceptible to falling. Since these purchase orders were approved on August eighth, Canton Township experienced historic storms on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth that impacted over two hundred of Canton Township's trees. As a result, additional costs of trimming, removal, stump grinding, and replanting have been incurred. The Public Works Division has done an exceptional job removing many of these trees and processing them through the brush chipper as approved by the Township Board on March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, which has resulted in significant cost savings. Based on the number of additional trees to remove and trim as a result of the storm damage, the projected twenty-twenty-three cost for tree trimming, tree removal, stump grinding, and restoration will increase by approximately seventeen thousand dollars, and a contingency of three thousand is also recommended. Therefore, a new purchase order in the amount of twenty thousand for PPM tree services and arbor care is requested. Director Dave, do you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything else to add, though. The Community Planner, Patrick Sloan, who's managing his contracts, is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks. Any questions or comments from the Board? No? Stephen?
Is this twenty thousand dollars also the twenty thousand in matching that's going to the matching or that's separate?
This will be separate. This will be to address a removal that we've mapped out and will do this year.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Okay, great. Now we move on to public comment, public comment. I'm looking online. There's five attendees. Any public comment? Please raise your hand. Public comment? No public comment? No public comment? I don't see. Okay, great. In the room?
Madam Supervisor, I have a written public comment that was sent to me by an individual. If I can?
Sure, go ahead.
It is directly questioned, which says, is there any update on the sidewalk at Coldstone Creamery and, and the liquor store in Cherry Hill Village? I imagine that's like Stefan Plaza. It's not a, I said, I know it's not a comment, but it's a serious matter. I almost fell. Somebody almost fell there. I don't know if there's a, I don't know if they reported it or not, but there was a public comment that was, I was asked to say about.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, anyone in the room? We don't have any public comment in the room? All right, great. Public comment is closed. Board comments, uh, staff comments? Anything happening?
I just wanted to say that our open house is scheduled for the seventh of October from eleven AM to two PM. So our annual open house, if anybody can make it out for that with the, we have the smokehouse set up and kids can try on the fire outfits and all of that stuff. So look forward to having everybody out there.
At the fire station here?
Fire Station One, correct. Yep. And then the second thing, some exciting news, is that the fire trucks that we ordered two years ago are finally finished, and they were shipped up from Ohio. So they are sitting at the plant up here in Apollo, and they're getting some final inspections done. So we should probably see them in the next couple of weeks here. So it's exciting to get those finally in service.
That's great. So when they, they're coming in, well, all outfitted, we'll have to go down and take some pictures.
I'll invite you all down there.
Great, thank you. We can look at the new dispatch center then. It should be finished by then, right?
Yeah, that's a, that's another good point is our dispatch, public safety renovation should be completed in the next couple of weeks here. We're just waiting on some inspections, and then we're going to be moving some furniture. And so hopefully on the seventeenth, when we do the study session, we can have all of you guys walk through there.
All right, thank you. Any other staff comments? Go ahead, Dave.
Yes, I, I did want to update and give the latest status of what we're dealing with GFL, especially with the leaf season impending upon us. So as you know, we've been struggling with the, the performance of them, certainly in the past year. In light of situation and, and with the leaf season coming upon us, the Public Works Team and other members of the Municipal Services Division have been working with GFL to ensure that our service levels for compost and leaf pickup this fall season are performed pursuant to our contract with GFL. The results of these discussions are as follows. Beginning the week of October ninth, curbside collection of residential yard waste will revert back to your regular collection day. GFL will no longer be collecting yard waste on Saturdays. GFL will be using staff from their Northville Yard versus their Wayne Yard to perform this work, and GFL has promised the township that this new setup will meet the township's expectations for compost yard, yard waste pickup for this fall. Although the township is cautiously optimistic that this plan will work, the Public Works Division has also developed alternative plans if GFL fails to meet the obligations for compost yard waste pickup. We stand ready to implement our alternative plan in a timely and efficient manner if that situation, situation should arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
Sorry, but since you brought up GFL, I had been planning to send you an email about this, but wondering if you had received reports of some kind of fluid being dumped by a GFL truck in different subdivisions and that it was reported to Eagle and then Eagle sent, or somebody, I think GFL was told to send out a cleanup.
Yes. Yes, that happened, yes.
Okay. Is it possible that we could get more information about exactly what occurred?
Yeah, I'll get a full report on it.
Okay, thank you.
And I will share it.
Thanks, Dave. Greg, I think you had your hand up also?
Yeah, I was just going to let the Board know that the tile project in the pool is making fantastic project, our progress. It's interesting with my office over there now, I get to see them working, and those, those gentlemen that are working on that project are hard, hardworking folks. But the Special Accommodations Locker Room One is now open with the new tiles. So we had kept the family locker room open and closed the Special Accommodations Locker Room One, Women's Locker Room, and Men's Locker Room that took you to the Aquatic Center while those locker rooms were being worked on. And then once Special Accommodations Locker Room was done, then we would reopen Special Accommodation, or reopen that one and close the family locker room. So that way, we would always have a option for families and individuals with special needs or accommodations for anybody who may need it. So it's excellent to see that that switch has already been made, and if anybody wants to see what the new tile is going to look like, you can go over to the summit and check out Special Accommodations Locker Room One. It's looking great.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to say? No? All right, thanks. Start up with the Board. Tanya?
I don't have any updates. I just wanted, you know, fall is here, so get your flu shots, COVID booster shots. There's quite a rise in those happening. So I got my COVID booster two days ago and hoping to get my flu shots in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Michael.
The Clerk's office is staying busy. We are still rocking the passports. They are, people are able to get an appointment relatively quickly. So if you do need passport or if you plan to do any travel, please feel free to reach out, check out our website, make an appointment. We are quick, we are painless, we'll take the photos there. So please do that. We are in discussions right now about preparing to potentially offer multi-year dog licenses, and our goal is to have that operational by, by next year. The County Commission passed a resolution that will allow us to do that. We would need to make some modifications internally, but it would be a substantial convenience to residents. I know I, with three dogs, would appreciate it and would be an efficiency for the, for the township as well. So we're looking at kind of bringing something before the Board pretty soon about that, hoping that, to implement that this, this, in the new year, and preparing to, to, to run early voting for the first time ever next year. So we'll be bringing some things before the Board before the end of October. We have to have our early voting plan ready for the February twenty-seventh primary. I will be calling the Election Commission together, so Kate and Stephen, we're going to get the band back together. We're going to be talking about inspector pay, we're going to be talking about precinct locations. Things got a little tight in twenty-twenty-two over at the Village Theater. So I think we're going to try to pull one of the precincts out of there and find an alternative location for it. We're looking at the summit, Greg, so we're working with Jason on that, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to help notify all of the voters about that potential change. But it should allow for a little bit more room and some cushion on Election Day, make things a little more comfortable at the Village Theater. But yeah, and, and we're making some other changes too. We're, you know, waiting as the, as the laws begin to change and, and the rules come out, the procedures. We'll be bringing some expenses to the Board. We had initially budgeted that, but I've sat down with finance, gone over some of the harder numbers that we kind of have, and we'll be looking at a, at a budget amendment for the end of the year to give us the resources we need to buy all the equipment we're going to need for next year. So we are getting prepared for the February twenty-seventh primary, which is scary, but it is coming up soon, and we're going to try to get those dog licenses, some multi-year dog licenses, ready in the new year, and, and we're still doing the passports. And I think we had a very successful year with passports. We got three months left, so we're going to try to finish strong.
Can you renew passports or is it first-time passports?
Yeah, so it's going to be first-time passports. You can renew your passport online, painlessly, provided you did not let it expire for a certain amount of time. If it's expired for a certain amount of time, they want to get you back in there and treat it like it's a brand-new one because you got to get a photo taken and all that kind of stuff. It's a whole thing. So if you do have a, if you have a passport, keep it current. If it is expired, I'd get on that as fast as possible. Little bit of professional inside advice.
Thank you. Stephen?
Want to echo the greetings to fall. It's gotten cool out there, and Tanya has told everyone to go get their COVID shots, so I'll be balancing that with telling everybody to go get some cider and donuts out there in the community. And I just wanted to thank all of you in the room tonight for helping me celebrate my wife and my thirty-first wedding anniversary tonight. When I asked her what she wanted to do, she said, I can think nothing better than you going to a, a board meeting while I stay at home and read. I invited her to come, but she declined. I don't know why. But yeah, happy anniversary, Kelly, and many more, so.
Happy anniversary. Want us to sing? Okay. Kate?
So happy anniversary, Stephen and Kelly. I don't really have much. Tanya, you'll be glad to know that I'm getting my flu shot and my COVID shot tomorrow, so should hopefully be some, somewhat more protected. And I see on this strange calendar that I found online that today is National Johnny Apple Seed Day, so like Stephen said, we should all go out to the apple orchard and get some cider and donuts to celebrate.
Thank you. So a couple of things. So COVID, as you said, is, it's spiking, and Canton is leading unfortunately with that in terms of Western Wayne County, so please get your COVID shots. And there's something else going around, you know, there's RSV and colds, so there's more than COVID going around right now. So flu shots are important, and strep throat, all kinds of things. So Saturday, we do have the Agent Orange 5K Race that starts at eight AM near Cherry Hill Village, and so if you want to sign up, you can get, go onto our Leisure Services page and sign up. I went to the fifty-five-plus golf outing on Friday. It was a beautiful day, had, had a lot more people than last year, so I think people want to do more things outside. We're seeing that increase, that still continues to increase. Our tennis, people are playing more tennis, we're seeing that increase, and people are, of course, asking for pickleball courts. We know that. So we hear you out there. We're looking, we're looking for a place. The veterans also have until September thirtieth, if you were in the Vietnam War, to fill out your PAC statements. We had something here the other day, last week, talking about that. So if you are a Vietnam veteran, please do that. Canton Cultural Cuisine was at the Hindu Temple on Friday. It was very nice. Our Hindu temple hosted it and showed us their culture, and Tanya was part of that, doing the cooking all day. It was very good food, and there were a lot of people that showed up, so we really appreciate that. We think that the mosque is next, and after that, it'll probably go back to the Gurdwara, and I think one of our Catholic churches. So thank you for that. Thanks for everybody participating. And as David said, you know, GFL is, we're disappointed, you know, like you said, Canton is cautiously optimistic that this plan will work, but we've had several plans from GFL and been disappointed before, so we will be looking and just to let the residents know, we are not letting things go. And so if things are missed, please call us because we are tracking. We keep track of this, so please call in and you can actually go online. What is the, where they fill out the forms? What is that website?
It's on our website, yeah.
Right on the front page, isn't it? Yeah, we have it on the front page now, so go to the front page and, I mean, every day you say, okay, how many GFL calls did we get today? Unfortunately, that's been the mantra for about a year, so we're very disappointed, but we're going to continue to monitor and push and continue to look for other, other but we're going to continue to monitor and push and continue to look for other venues. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting over.